Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, I would like to call attention to item B on the consent agenda. You have an updated HR report, number five, and you also, under the Cedar Falls-Caps-Waterloo agreement, you have a new agreement in front of you, so just for your record. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Just, I'm just curious, pure curiosity. So, University of North Dakota, that's for them to do student teaching in our district?
Correct. Anytime per our code that we have either a level-one experience, level-two, level-three student teaching that occurs, you have to have an agreement directly with that institution. So, this is unusual. We've usually not had an agreement with them, but there must be a placement that is occurring from that institution within our school district. And typically what happens, it means that there might be somebody from Cedar Falls that graduated from Cedar Falls High School, or from the Cedar Valley that went to school within that institution and wants to come back to student teach.
Okay. Now, given the rivalry between you and I and UNC?
They can't wear their school colors, though. Okay, do I, we have a motion and a second?
Joyce, I was just gonna ask if Andy or Dan could just kind of clarify for anyone watching, the agreement that we've got with Waterloo regarding CAPS and their CTE program. I think that's a really great partnership that is going to benefit both communities, and it's really exciting to see a great collaborative opportunity for us. So if you guys could just explain that a little bit, that'd be great.
Sure. I'll take the first stab, and then let Dan maybe expand on this. We're excited with this partnership. It's something that we've worked hard on the last several years. We're excited by our Center for Advanced Professional Studies and what we think that's gonna provide for our students. And then Waterloo is working on their Career Center and their expansion of career programs. We know that they are separate programs. They serve different areas and maybe vocational needs, but it's really focused on how do we help students experience career fields and career exploration. What we've talked about with Waterloo is we don't want to duplicate programs. What we want to do is make sure that we are efficient, that we are spending our tax dollars wisely, and let's share students back and forth based on individual student interests or needs of programming. So, this upcoming year, with this 2080 agreement we have in place, there are students from Waterloo that are gonna come over for our CAPS program, and we have roughly about 40 students a year that look at CNA coursework through Hawkeye Community College, one of the strands that Waterloo is a CNA strand. So, we're gonna have 10 students of those 40 that are going to go and take CNA courses at the, their Waterloo Career Center in their district. So, very exciting. It's going to be a great venture, and certainly something that we hope to expand on and make sure that we're efficient and not duplicating programs.
Go ahead.
And I would echo that. When you think about the CNA program, we've been offering that for a number of years, but recently we've been, it's been difficult for us to get an instructor for that course. So, our students have been forced to take that class on campus at Hawkeye Community College. So, this provides an opportunity for those students not to have to drive all the way out to campus, can take that course at the CTE center, and be able to get their CNA completed. Unfortunately, because of their ability to handle the number of students, not all of our students could get in at the Waterloo Center. So, we still have students that will be traveling out to Hawkeye for next year. But, those are the kind of things, we didn't want to jump into things too largely the first year, so we want to learn how to walk before we can run. I think as we move forward, you know, that we've had to work out some issues with scheduling, because their schedule, of course, doesn't match up with our schedule. The CAPS program, of course, takes up a stu, takes up three periods of a student's day, so that was difficult for some of the Waterloo students to be able to travel over in time to be there and those kind of things. So, we'll continue to look at, at how can we refine the schedule to revise things, the programming, to allow for better partnerships that students will be able to get to.
Good question. Thank you. Thanks for asking it. Any other questions?
With being 11th, 12th graders, this doesn't, this is not considered anything like open enrollment or anything, it's just sharing students.
Just sharing students. One of the things that we had talked about is ensuring that we are within the kind of equal numbers of shared students back and forth. We didn't put concrete numbers in there by any means, but it's one of those open-ended opportunities to continue the discussion if all of a sudden there's certain higher numbers of students traveling one way or the other. But again, it's really just about collaboration and trying to partner as we can for student success and student opportunities.
Good question, Susan. All right. Do I have all in favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the annual meeting, the approval of the depository bank and maximum deposit resolutions.
I'll real briefly go through that. Before you tonight is the annual requirement by the Department of Ed to set up depository banks and maximum resolutions for the different banking institutions that the district may or may not use for this upcoming school year. There's no changes recommended from the deposit resolutions that the board approved, I believe it was last February.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve fiscal year 2018 depository banks and maximum deposit resolutions for the Cedar Falls Community School District as presented. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to the appointment of the Board Secretary. Do I have a motion to approve the Board Secretary? Yes. Okay.
I move to appoint Douglas J. Neffker as School District Secretary.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Really, this is an annual appointment, and obviously as our CFO, Mr. Neffker, we're honored to have him continue as Board Secretary and the work that he provides. So, this is kind of a ongoing annual appointment, and we're certainly happy it is.
Although that three seconds of silence did worry me.
Could've been a lot more.
This needs to be contingent on more green screen presentations.
There you go. This'll be a-
Our book's about allowing silences, Doug, so we're all-
That's true. We'll talk about that later.
This is a roll call vote.
Yes, it is. Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lieber?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. Over here, Doug. Raise your right hand. All right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Office of School Board Secretary in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Moving on to the appointment of the authorized school business official. We have a motion for that.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the appointment of Douglas Neffker as the authorized school business official for the Cedar Falls Community School District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on now to our regular meeting. Public comment?
There was none.
Okay. And now to the secretary's report.
Okay. If you want to pull up the monthly financials, please. There we go. And we'll start off with the general fund, and again, these are the cash balances as of June 30th of 2017, or the cash balances for the end of the 2016-17 school year. You can see in the general fund that we have an ending fund balance of $10,684,571, very, very similar to the fund balance that we had one year ago. Make sure I get my stuff here. In the management fund, very little activity for the month of June, as would be typical towards the end of the year, with an ending balance of $939,918. That balance will drop significantly at the end of July, as our, all of our insurance, liability, property, workers' compensation, auto insurance premiums are paid in, in the month of July. So, that balance will change quite a bit next month when we come to get together. In the capital projects fund, of course, this is for the Aldrich Elementary School, as well as the upcoming North Cedar and Orchard Hill projects. You can see, we had revenue for the month of $9,800, and that's all interest. And you can see the expenditures of $1.64 million for an ending balance of $29,309,855. And the statewide one-cent local option sales tax, you'll see revenue for the month of That's a bit unusual for the month of June. We actually received two payments from the State of Iowa in the month of June. Typically, what will happen is you, they pay the last day of the month, so we'll get our May payment in June, but they also made the June payment early. So, that's a bit unusual that we would record two deposits in one month. On the expenditure side, we had some minor expenditures, and that basically has to do with the new high school site, some costs associated with that. And then the transfer out, the negative number is, that's a reverse back. We've been, we, every month, you'll notice that we put money from Fund 33 into Fund 40 for our sinking fund to make our debt service payments. Well, we overestimated that amount because of all the refinancing and everything that took place this year, and so we just moved it back. And so, that's what that number indicates. So, you can see that our ending fund balance in the Fund 33 is $7,782,785, and you can see where, what's restricted to $995,000, and then the unrestricted is 16 point, or excuse me, $6.78 million. And the physical plant and equipment levy, revenue of very minor amount of $16,000 for the month, expenditures of $704,000, and those basically, the big one of that would be all the network equipment that the board approved back in, I believe it was April, is coming in, and so we're paying for that, as well as some miscellaneous work. We're moving, we moved the portables to North Cedar, so that project, part of that is in there. A little bit of the, for the Robinson Dresser baseball field is in there, as well as the roof project at Holmes as well, or excuse me, Hanson as well. So, we have an ending balance of $4,040,415 in the physical plant and equipment levy. And the debt service levy, we had $15 worth of interest in there. You can see that sinking fund transfer back to Fund 33 to sort of true things up for the end of the year, and we ended up with a balance of $15 in the debt service fund for the end of the year. And our goal is to have that as close to zero as possible when we get to the end of the fiscal year. Student Activity Fund, you can see revenues and expenditures for the month, and we had an ending balance of $601,690. Trust and Agency Account, a lot of end-of-year activity, which is pretty typical with the revenue and expenditures, ending balance of $258,934 rounded. Food Service, final cash balance of $787,548. Again, that, that number will not be that high over the next couple of months, as one, there's no revenue coming in in the month of July, and the only revenue that comes in in August would be from parents making deposits into the lunch accounts as school starts. And then also remember that we bought a significant amount of equipment to kind of catch up. The board approved that a few months ago, and so that fund balance will drop fairly significantly in the next couple of months. High School Coffee Shop, pretty quiet as they closed out the end of the year. You can see that there was a 70, just under $7,700 in that account. And then the River Hills Consortium, that, we had a little bit of revenue in, and then all the expenditures out. That's all third-quarter tuition payments. So, you'll see that activity really pick up now in July and August as the final tuition bills for the 2016-17 school year. They're required to be sent out by July 15th, which they were, and so you'll start seeing those dollars flow through here in July and August as we receive those dollars and make those payments to the ADA.
Okay.
And with that, I'd entertain any questions that the board would have.
Any questions for Doug? Hearing none, and the secretary's financial report will be placed on file for audit.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item C, Communications. I've had none, any?
No.
All right. Approval now. Item D, Approval of the Orchard Hill Elementary Project Bid.
And then I'm gonna turn the ball over to Mr. Channer from Structure Architects, who'll sort of walk it through that, and if we can pull up the other presentation.
Okay.
I think it's coming.
Well, I think-
There it is.
There we go.
Just, just those photographs on there, those were taken at Aldrich yesterday, so that you can kind of see what's going on there. Lots of-
Lots of work.
-activity going on in the district, and to kind of give everybody a little bit of an idea that, what we're doing, so. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dan.
And before Dan, you start, and just because we showed those pictures, I would encourage everybody in the community, if they haven't gone out there by the new elementary site, to drive out there, just to see the construction, the expansion, the new homes that are going up, the roadways that are being installed. It is simply amazing as you drive out there and look at all of the growth that's occurring. It's really, really exciting, so.
Yes, it is. And Mother Nature's been good to us.
Yes.
The site dries out amazingly well. You know, a couple of times it's rained, the next day it's been ready to go again, and not, not a mud hole. So, it's been good. Okay. What you see before you is a listing of, we had four contractors for the Orchard Hill project, ranging from $10,169,510 to $12,350,000. Our recommendation is that you award the project to Peters Construction out of Waterloo with the low basis bid of $10,169,510, and add in Alternates Number Two for tunable lighting, and Alternate Number Five for the additional reinjection well, which again is just kind of a placeholder, so that when the time comes, if we need it, we have the price already there. So, that brings the total recommended bid cost to $10,312,650.
Remind, remind me again, what was our target?
For this one, our target was just under 10. So, we were pretty, pretty close on this one.
For the base bid or including the options?
For the base bid.
Okay.
We're hopeful we don't need the injection well, just with our other projects, we've not needed that. But again, it's, it's a placeholder. So, we hope that that's gonna be kind of a change order that's going to provide us back that difference over the course of this project. But again, we need to have it as a placeholder in case we need to have it.
And indications from the original drilling of the supply well is that we'll be in good shape, but until you move 800 feet, you don't know.
All right. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the base bid of $10,169,510, as well as Alternate Two for $4,140, and Alternate Number Five for $139,000 for Peters Construction, Waterloo, Iowa, for the Orchard Hill Elementary School Edition and Remodeling Project.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the approval of the Orchard Hill Elementary Kitchen Equipment Bid.
Okay. We have a slide on that? Okay. Okay, here we go. Okay, so, the same day, we received five bids for the kitchen equipment. What you can see there is, they were all relatively close. The two low were less than $1,000 apart. So, our recommendation is that you award the contract to Rapids Food Service Contract and Design out of Marion, Iowa, for $132,716.
All right. Any questions for Dan?
Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the food service equipment bid of $132,716 from Rapids Food Service and Design, Marion, Iowa, for the Orchard Hill Elementary School Edition and Remodeling Project.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Approval of item F, Approval of the North Cedar Elementary Project Bid.
As you can see, we received five bids for this project with Cardinal Construction out of Waterloo being the low. The bottom, the low three, were all relatively close. Really, the low four, they were all really pretty tight in there. So, it is our recommendation that the project be awarded to Cardinal Construction for a base bid of $8,896,560, except Alternate Number Two for tunable lighting, an add of $7,300, and a deduct to install alternative digital lighting controls for a deduct of $5,700, for a total recommended construction cost of $8,898,160.
Just a quick expansion on the lighting controls. North Cedar has two different lighting control systems within the building, so we put in the standard, typical-
District standard.
...standard that we have, but we also put this in as an alternative to say, with this already in place, what will that cost to go with that lighting module? And there was actually a deduct in all three cases, so it does not change necessarily how we light the building or what we do with performance, it just allows us to have a deduct.
Any other question? Jeff?
Dan, what was the lower, when we bid this the first time, what was our lowest bid?
It was $9,650,000.
And what was our, and what was our target to, for this project?
Our target was, we wanted it to be down around seven, but we revised that upwards to be right under eight. So, we're still higher than where we want to be. But, we, after our, after bids were taken originally, we went back, worked with staff and administration, take, looking at everything we could to reduce the cost as much as possible, and this is where it's at.
So, then a question for you, so as far as additional funds, this comes out of our SAVE fund, because obviously we didn't bond for any more than this?
Correct. We'll, we'll be using some leftover dollars that we were hoping to use for future projects to cover this.
So, stated more bluntly, we're dipping into our high school fund in order to complete this project, which is a priority for us right now, but our, our large project for the SAVE funds will be the, will be the high school someday, right?
I'd say, I'd answer that as a kinda, because really, we have that 10-year PEPAL plan, and there's components in that PEPAL plan that we will probably wait a year instead of enacting. We would wait a year, and those are the funds that would be utilized to help offset some of the overtures. We also know that, as we look to the future, the high school project's extremely important, so we're trying to kind of reserve dollars and save dollars as much as we can. So, every dollar that we might spend, you know, on, on a different project could impact that long-term, but in this case, it's not necessarily going to take away dollars from the high school project, it's going to be projects that are going to kind of be delayed for one or two years as we continue to make sure that we have the spaces we need for our elementary students. We do know that we'll have probably four seed money for a new high school, once all this is completed and done, a little over a million dollars for seed money for that new high school. So, even at where we're at now, as we look to the future, we still feel very comfortable with at least having that initial start for some high school dollars.
Dan, this is over two years or three years of the construction?
This would be finished, the intent is fall of '19.
Okay.
So, initially, we had it running a little longer, so we tried, we worked with, again, the administration and staff at the building, trying to condense that timeline so that, and we found a way that we think that it'll work, so that was good.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the bid?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the base bid of $8,896,560, as well as Alternate Number Two for $7,300, and Alternate Number Five, deduct of $5,700 from Cardinal Construction, Waterloo, Iowa, for the North Cedar Elementary School Edition and Remodeling Project.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to the approval of the North Cedar Elementary Kitchen Equipment Bid.
We received, again, the same day, three bids for the kitchen equipment, again, relatively close, and we were recommending that you award that to Wilson Restaurant Supply out of Cedar Falls for an amount of $133,908.31.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the North Cedar Equipment Bid?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the food, the food service equipment bid of $133,908.31 from Wilson Restaurant Supply, Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the North Cedar Elementary School Edition and Remodeling Project.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item H on the agenda is the Approval of the Robinson Dresser Field Lighting Bid.
I guess I'll start tackling that. We've got a couple of gentlemen here from Modus also that could answer any questions that the board might have, if we can get the bids up on the screen. There we go. We took bids to replace the ballfield lighting at the ballpark, and I'm gonna turn it over. Before I hit, why don't you introduce yourself and-
My name's Magronick. I work with Modus Engineering. I was the lead electrical designer for this project. And then from, we had, we received two bids. The first one was from Van Monen Electric and K&amp;W Electric was the second one, and we advised to go with K&amp;W Electric for the base bid of $222,900, and to accept Alternate Number Two, which is to upgrade to LED lighting versus HID lighting for a price of $59,195.
Now, as we recall, as we talk through this, this is that second phase of the baseball field renovation and remodeling. Because of the slope- field renovation and remodeling. Because of the slope and the time when this was constructed and how the ground has just changed over time in that area, the amount of dirt work that needs to be done there, the actual lights in the outfield would be about three foot exposed above the level of the playing field. So, they need to be redone, removed, and plus, they're about 30-year-old light poles, and if you go out there, you can see they're angled and not necessarily in the best of shape. When we looked at this, we know that the overall price is going to be below our, our estimate for the entire project, is what we anticipate, and certainly with the LED lights, that's been our industry, or excuse me, our district-wide standard going in classrooms with LED lighting. And as we look at this being a 25-year warranty, plus, we hope that this is going to be a 30-to-40-year investment, it makes sense to go with a much more modern technology with LED lighting, not only for efficiency's sake, but then also for staff time, changing the light bulbs, things like that. So, and I think the clarity and light pollution is significantly cut down when you start looking at LED lighting versus traditional light bulbs.
This will be done this fall?
It will be.
Seth Taylor has these LED lighting, and it is really a neat lighting system.
The joint tennis court project that the city, the school district, and university are working with, that's also LED lighting as well. And the engineers tell us that there basically is no light splash-
Scatter.
...or spill. And every, and the consultants that we talked to all recommended moving up to the LED lighting. I think one consultant sort of described it as buying a brand-new CD player. Yes, you can still buy them, but that's sort of old technology that's going out, and DDRs are now the new thing, so LED would be the, sort of the equivalent to that.
Okay, good. Do I have a motion to approve the-
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the base bid of $222,900, and alternate number two for $59,195 from K&amp;W Electric, Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the Robinson Dresser Baseball Field Improvement Lighting Upgrades.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
I'm just going to point out, not to rehash previous discussions, that, that I don't believe, I certainly don't have anything against lighting, and especially not against LED lighting, if anybody knows my business, but just, I don't think this is the highest and best use of funds for our school district, given the other needs that we have, and so just, I, again, no need to rehash previous statements, but just so that people understand why.
And just a reminder that this was on the pebble. Is that correct?
This was on the 10-year master plan-
10-year master plan for the pebble.
That the board approved and the community voted to approve, yes.
Great. And we did have some tennis court savings.
Yes, and we'll be using those tennis court savings towards this project.
Great. Any other questions?
I just have a question for either Doug or our engineers that are here. Over the life of the project, do we anticipate that upgrade? I mean, I'm assuming there's utility savings, and you mentioned maybe the manpower savings. Do we anticipate that over the life of the project, we would recoup that, or would it be close? I'm just curious. I don't know what the numbers would look like, or-
Yeah, as, as far as energy savings, since the lights, I mean, baseball field lights, you, about 200 hours per year of usage, you won't see it necessarily in energy savings, but as far as a maintenance standpoint, and also just a general better quality of light, as far as playing, it's going to be a much better for the players, fans, everyone watching games. So, yeah, so once again, it's not always in, for electricity costs, but for maintenance standpoint, since the other version, the HID lighting, is a technology that's being phased out 25 years, 30 years down the road. It may not even be around anymore, so.
From a maintenance perspective, with the current lighting system that we have, is we have to rent a beach picker, for lack of a better way to describe it, to get up there and look at, and do the lights. And when we do that, we basically change all the bulbs at the same time. To rent that unit alone is about $600 for the day, and we typically will do that annually. So, if you take that times 25 years, theoretically, that there would be a savings just in that, plus the cost of the bulbs for, with the LED lighting. If we do have a problem, we make a phone call and it's supposed to be taken care of.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the discussion of our legislative priorities. Dr. Patty put a hard copy in front of you, but you've, you have one in your pack, in your board report, too, that it was electronically sent to you.
A lot of times, we have this done in a two-part process, so it's really up to the board to decide the best way to go about this. We always, typically, will hand out the priorities and the list of priorities. This year, Iowa Association of School Boards have the same list of priorities that they did last year. So, what is in your packet and what's before you tonight is the list of those 30 different priorities. So, they have recommended that each school board across the state select four priorities that we believe are most important for us to advocate for, and then certainly uses as our talking points for a platform as we meet coming up in November. You will see that there's a star by four of those priorities. Those are the priorities that were selected by the Cedar Falls School Board last year, and you can see that's priority number one, research-based initiatives. Priority number 20, supplemental state aid, and to ensure that supplemental state aid is set in a timely manner. ISAB legislative priority number 27, which is the one-cent sales tax, the SAVE, one-cent penny, and have that be extended or have the sunset removed completely. And then, number 28 was the fourth one that we selected last year, and that was allowing a simple majority for school bond issues. I think all those certainly are important, and certainly open to the dialogue or discussion. In the past, what we have done is, we have just handed these out, allow board members to kind of read through them, and then come back at the next meeting to kind of advocate and discuss which of the top four that we'd want to put down as our resolutions, but certainly up to any kind of discussion or direction that the board would like to take in this. I would advocate for SAVE, though, because the one-cent extension would be extremely important for us as a district, and something that would be very impactful in our high school project as we look to the future.
And not only for our district, but for districts throughout the whole state.
Across the state.
I mean, there are other districts, this is impacting even more than it is ours.
It reduces property tax impact significantly as we look across the state of Iowa.
Just a philosophical question. I think four or five has typically been, you know, we, we picked that many, and I, I agree with all of these. Does it, does it make a difference? Does it speak a louder message if we narrow these down and say, knowing the makeup of the legislature, knowing that it's for a year, does it matter that these are the two we would really like to focus on and put our lobbying efforts towards, or does that not matter?
I think the delegate assembly is where it's really determined, and so, at the delegate assembly, you've, you've gone to that, right? Yeah. When you go to those, they discuss which districts are supporting which ones, and then that's where it's decided how many are set as priorities for the, for our lobbyists and for all of us to advocate for. So, even, I think, even if we just said two, one or two, by the time you have delegate assembly, I don't think it would be that, that view. I don't know. Maybe we could try.
That's the challenge. We're one of 335 district school boards that are going to decide these across the state, and then when they all come together, obviously, there's different weighted votes and allowances. I'm not sure if we would be able to convince. It would be great if we could, because I think a singular voice would be important to say, here's our one or two priorities that everybody across the state think are important, that benefit large, small, rural, urban school districts, but I'm not sure that is something that can be accomplished, especially with this large of a group, or will it necessarily be recognized that us as a district set two priorities? What it might make a difference on, though, and it's a point worth noting, is our local legislators. If we, as a, as a school district and school board, have set two priorities and say, these are our two legislative priorities, we need to have these advocated for, we, we hope, and certainly talk to them about trying to advocate for those, I think that might make a difference with our local legislators.
Well, I agree with Jenny. I think 27 is the one that's the most important, and I, I think in the last couple of years, we have continued to go to Des Moines and advocate for the extension of that sunset, or even just to do away with a sunset. I, I also personally feel like number 20, the supplemental state aid, is so important also. Going down and visiting with our legislators, I feel like we probably can affect more movement on the SAVE than we can on the supplemental state aid. That's just my opinion. But, we could focus our energies on that and make the second one maybe be the supplemental state aid.
I mean, and I think we could talk about 27 and 28. You know, we have a pretty compelling story to tell about how 28, not, not having that super majority for a bond vote, and what the extension of the timetable for trying to get something done. You know, when you have to have multiple votes, there's a cost in having the vote, and then you delay construction, so construction costs go up. I, I think we could, they may not be moved by it, but we, we have some evidence to show how that truly impacts districts and how it uses additional tax funds, that then we have to kind of adjust what we need to do and want to do, just because of kind of a timing issue, so.
Is number 29 going, going to be a, become a topic, you think, again, next year?
I hope not.
Me, too.
I'm not sure. Some of that's going to be federal-level discussions as well, and what some of those edicts might be from that level of government. You know, right now, the, you know, either online schools, charter schools, other components, all have to be local directives of the local school board, and I certainly think that that's going to be something that IASB will certainly advocate for, as well as other public school entities across the state. So, right now, even some of our local legislators have said they, they just want to learn much more about this prospect and venture. I've not heard a great deal more about some deeper conversations, but it doesn't conclude that it won't come back up.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
Thoughts from the board?
I would rather focus on 27 and 28.
Okay. Jeff?
If I was, pick one, I'd do 27.
Okay. Jim, your thoughts?
I think you're barking up a tree with number 28, but I think you gotta keep it. For 25 years, I've heard that, but 27 is definitely the one that affects us.
So, are we feeling comfortable having just two? Or, and those two, we're hearing 27 and 28, with 27 being our major focus? I'm just asking the question.
I'd say, if, if, if they ask us, what was the one thing they could do to help us the most, which is a, the one thing, if the one thing is get the SAVE, that does more for our school district and our, allowing us to build a high school than anything else on this list.
Keep the main thing the main thing.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question on supplemental state aid. I thought there was some talk in the last session of, you know, they've not been following the state law of having to set timely funding, and I thought there was some talk, because they all recognize they don't follow it, and they accept that they don't follow it, of maybe either changing the law or doing something. Have we heard more on that, what they're planning to do, or are they just going to continue to ignore that law as they set state aid?
No, it's been changed. So, now, it has to be set by, oh, gosh, mid-February, I believe. It's a certain formula, again, of the fiscal, the fiscal year in which it falls. So, it's no longer that 12-month in advance setting the supplemental state aid. It's actually within that-
And just for one year.
-calendar. Yep. So, yes, and we, everything that we've heard, everything that we've seen, we are not anticipating potentially that there will be a very large SSA coming into next year. So, we'll just have to advocate and do our best and see how well that plays out.
So, as the administrators and the finance people, what, do you, do you have, would you have a preference for the bond-issue one over the supplemental state aid, or vice versa? I mean, you two are the ones that deal with the budget and the finance.
And I don't want to speak for Doug, but I would say the SAVE extension, and especially the elimination of the sunset of a SAVE, is so much more impactful for our district, not only short-term, but long-term, as we look at what we need to be able to do and have to be able to do as we look at our facilities and our high school needs. That can save an extensive amount of local-generated tax dollars off of the expense of a high school, and to a point where I think the impact is what I would call significant, very significant.
How about the other two, 20 and 28?
20, I think, is one of those aspects where I think that's been a priority for the legislation, or, excuse me, the Iowa Association of School Boards, as well as multiple other entities across the state. And what we have asked for is never necessarily what is received. I think it's kind of barking up a tree that I think is, when, when we've advocated for higher supplemental state aids, it's kind of, falls on deaf ears now due to the fact that I think they just see us advocating for, for more funds, more money, not necessarily for what it means to continue to educate students in unique ways, as we look at all the different myriads of challenges that are facing public education. I don't see that making a dramatic impact by having that on our platform.
That's what I wondered. Okay.
And I would say on 28, the one thing that, that's on there that a lot of people don't think about is when we, when we calculate our total debt against our debt limit, we do have to calculate our statewide one-cent sales tax revenue bonds, and there's been a large debate amongst my colleagues about whether that should, would be appropriate or not. And it's not a debt against the property tax, citizens of the district, it's a debt against our future revenue proceeds, and if they're not going to extend the sunset on the statewide one-cent sales tax, they are going to have to address that, because I know that there are a significant number of school districts, especially in the Des Moines metro area, that are going to be hitting that 5% limit. And so, if they're, if they're going to address the statewide one-cent, that'll help alleviate some of those problems, but if they don't, then they really need to look at potentially alleviating that, because it's sort of an undue burden. I, I look at it as a double accounting, but some folks in Des Moines don't see it the same way I do.
Thanks.
Do we need to approve these? Do we have a motion to approve the legislative priorities? And I'm hearing SAVE, and I'm hearing the bond, right? 27 and 28.
But advocating that 27, when asked, would be our top priority.
Priority.
By far.
Actually, I think almost the conversation could go hand-in-hand.
It can.
Okay, okay. Do I, do we have agreement on that, Susie?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on to the approval of our superintendent's contract. It's this time of year that we sit down, and we've sat down with Dr. Patty and had just a discussion about our goals and how he sees the future of our district. It's always a pleasure to sit down and have that conversation with you. I think all of us could agree that you have been a strong leader for us, and a visionary leader, and we feel good about the way the district is moving. So, with that, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract?
I consider it a privilege to make this motion. I move that the Board of Education of the Cedar Falls Community School District issue a three-year contract to Andrew R. Patty as Superintendent of Schools with a salary of $195,943. For the first year of the contract, $3,500 in district car allowance, and standard district administrative benefit package.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments from the board?
And this is a continuing contract, a three-year, there was a term, we, we had talked about a rolling, that term was- about a rolling, that term wasn't put in that, was that in the motion?
It's just an extension of his contract.
Extension, okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay, perfect. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
My honor.
Okay, moving on to Chapter Seven.
Yeah.
Silence. Do the heavy lifting.
Because I just violated the premise of the chapter by jumping in when there's silence. Yes. This is the final chapter of the fierce conversations, and really, I think, very important chapter, as it talks about let silence do the heavy lifting. I sent out a couple just conversation starter questions earlier this morning, to really just kind of focus in on Chapter Seven, what it meant to each of us as we reread through that and kind of finish this book. And I think it's always important to make sure that everybody understands, as we hear the term fierce conversations, the way that our, the author, Susan Scott, defines fierce on the cover, is robust, intense, powerful, passionate, unbridled conversations. And that's certainly what we all hope to have, as we look at facing reality and looking at being impactful with our conversations. I had down just a couple of the STEM starters, and she talks about a little bit, especially on page 219, that there's been times in conversations that really, we don't have conversations, or sometimes we're the recipients of a versation, because the con between is not present. Have you been involved with a one-way conversation with somebody? How did you handle that? How did you crack that? How does that impact you in either your daily or your work lives?
We're all practicing Chapter Seven.
Cabinet? Do you have an example?
There you go.
Thank you for coming.
Well, I think it's only natural when you are in a conversation, especially if it's one that maybe you have a lot of knowledge in that area, or it's, some statements may be made that you disagree with. It's only natural to be starting to formulate your response to that instead of really listening. And that's the whole key premise of that statement there, is that you really need to step back and try to look at the perspective of that person, to even sit back and rephrase what they are saying before you're formulating your next response in your mind. Some of us that have gone through the DIS training and were double D, that's a difficult task for some of us to deal with.
Page 224 does a good job talking, kind of what Dan just described, is some of the behaviors that people exhibit when they're talking, usually at somebody, and not necessarily with somebody in that conversation, not just a versation. And that was one of the questions, you know, is there a habit that they just, that our author describes there? And I think she has eight or nine different habits that sometimes are exhibited, that you exhibit at times, or frustrate you when they're exhibited at you. And I know one of them that I do, and I'm guilty of it, and I try to catch myself when I do do it. Sometimes I try to formulate a response as somebody's talking to me, and thinking about what am I going to say in response to the points that they're bringing up, instead of truly being engaged. And I think one of her chapters was being in that moment and listening to the conversation. And sometimes I know I do that probably with my wife as well, which she's not afraid anymore to call that to my attention, to make sure I'm aware of that, which I think is important, and that's part of the fierce conversations. Are there other habits that you see, or sometimes might be a trigger, which we talked about in Chapters Five and Six, that happen to you or with you in conversations that you had?
Well, this isn't an answer to the Chapter Five and Six, but she mentioned that in America, we are all expected to jump in right away with answers and responses. And we aren't, if you let a big pause go, it's perceived as totally dead space. And so if it takes a few minutes to process what has just been said, sometimes we view that as a negative, and that we're not quick enough, or listening well enough, or whatever, if we're taking time to actually think about it, or we respond. I thought that was an interesting observation, and very true.
Very true. I thought that was very intriguing, too, that some of the guidance lines or guidance that foreign countries and dignitaries give to some of their representatives, especially come to the United States, that we're uncomfortable with silence.
Yeah. And I wonder if we would become more comfortable with that, if we would actually be better listeners, because we knew we had that little bit of space before we needed to respond.
Agreed.
Other comments?
I just find it quite interesting that I just wrote a book on listening to the heart. And I didn't realize I was that trendy. Also, this book is 15 years old, and the problems still are discussed.
So relevant still today, just the work that she wrote about 15 years ago. Another follow-up question to that, and this was on page 230. She talks about, you know, sometimes the confusion with silence and passivity, that silence that she's recommending is that reflective, that restful silence, to be able to listen to really what she describes as that inner voice, to make sure that you are hearing what the other person says, so you can make sure that you truly are a deep listener, not nonparticipation or passivity as far as silence. What I liked is she talked on page 233 about some of the different kind of nonparticipants rationalizations or responses when they pull themselves away from a conversation, or don't actively participate in a conversation. And there's times where you hear that, times that you see that. Have you ever seen when people utilize nonparticipation and an excuse for nonparticipation? How do you respond to that in your world, your professional world? And have you ever had to turn those conversations into kind of fierce conversations to turn them into a positive light? Do you want to adjust your television?
Yes.
Volume.
I'm thinking. So my three seconds was perfectly fine now, wasn't it? Well, I think sometimes people, when you're having a conversation, they say those things, right, to shut down the conversation, too. Correct? I mean, they say, I'm not, well, you probably know better than I do, and then they want to move away from it, right? So it depends upon your energy level to take them back on, to say, you know, well, I'm not either. But it may be something I agree or not agree with or disagree with.
I think there's often a lot of body language that goes along with that, which it's, even though it's not spoken.
What do you think?
Yeah. Exactly.
I think our discussion is, you always lean towards those combative discussions as being, you know, somebody's not listening, somebody's not communicating. And I really believe that allowing that discussion to be listened to, it gets it off of someone's chest, and they feel that somebody has really listened, rather than you having a solution. Because many times, there's not a solution that they're going to accept.
A lot of it's the processing and being able to maybe just hear what they are saying. So you can say, we understand your frustration, and are there solutions that you can recommend? And sometimes that happens to open up different levels of conversations as well.
Don't you feel there's a big difference between where the conversations are taking place? I mean, our conversations are a lot different here compared to, say, a phone conversation, or one-to-one. And we operate differently in all those different settings, at least I do. You know, I think I have trouble with phone conversations, with big silences on phone conversations. You feel like you have to fill them in more than...
I think that goes back to your body language comment. I think when you're face-to-face, eye-to-eye with somebody, and there's a pause, you can kind of see if that's a pause where they're being thoughtful and reflective. Is it a pause because of a reaction to a statement that was made? And I think that allows for that connectivity. And I think that's part of Susan Scott's whole premise, is that it's really about the relationships. The conversation is your relationship, and you can ruin an entire relationship based on one conversation. And you might not even know that you've ruined that relationship based on that one conversation, unless you're intuitive and can read that body language and see that body language. And it's so important to be able to have that presence when you're having those conversations.
Other ideas?
Or any other ah-hahs that came from the book?
Yeah. Well, I think she, didn't she admit early on that she had times, several times, where she had those emotional wakes? And I think, you know, at least for me personally, that you learn maybe as you get older how to change that so that doesn't happen, or you learn from one so you don't repeat it again. And I think she said, too, she learned from those. And I think when you experience them, especially with a spouse or a child, how you can go back, and it takes a little while to regain their, and I don't want to say trust, but just that they know that you're there for them, and willing to listen to them, and pay attention to what your words are saying to them. So this was a really good book. This was a really good book. And I can see where it has a lot of applications in other settings, just besides here.
Perfect. Thank you for participating in this, and certainly reading the book. And obviously, our administrative team went through this training this year. It's been, I think, a very positive and tremendous training for us. And again, hopefully, the book will be beneficial for board members. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Don't really have a whole lot to report. One thing that is within the board packet is the board calendar. We will have that on the August 14 agenda for approval. It lists the informational reports. We really wanted to put down some of those components that are upcoming, that we know are kind of important, as we look to the next year or two. And our hope is to start off in September with kind of a STEM/Robotics presentation, and get some of our team members here, and certainly highlight some of the work that they're doing, because it is truly unbelievable. And again, any other informational items or thoughts that board members have? But several different things in here. And we did put down in January, anticipating that one of the pillars of our legislative platform could be our local option sales tax. We put down in January, knowing that that would be a crucial time to continue our advocacy, to have a presentation on law, to be able to talk a little bit more deeply about the impact for the high school project, the impact it could have locally, and really use that as kind of an educational component in January. So you can just see some of those in red within that document for this upcoming school year.
I, go ahead. I was just going to say, thank you for putting in the IASB follow-up.
Yes.
On that as well.
That's always a fun discussion, just to talk about the learnings and some of the things that we experienced at that annual convention. So I think we started that two years ago, and I think that was a great idea, so.
And then November 13, we'll have the legislators here. So that's good, because it helps us when we go to Des Moines. So hopefully, we can get a good turnout, and they will participate.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other things regarding the calendar? Okay, hearing none. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
I just have a comment to share. I had a colleague who attended, and I'm not going to remember the name of the conference in Des Moines. It was a STEM STEAM Elevate Conference, and one of the presenters was Jen Hartman from North Cedar, our principal who is going to Thailand. So good luck, Jen, but we will miss her horribly. And my colleague just really had great things to say about Jen's presentation. Jen talked about Sidecar Coffee. Our local coffee house here is partnering with North Cedar, and they're going to work with the elementary students at that school. I mean, I would love to have that maybe on the calendar at some point, for them to come and talk to us. It sounded like the kids are going to be experimenting with science and math, talking about how you make coffee blends, and how you work with the chemistry of just determining how to make your coffee taste different, and actually doing the processing of it, and then bringing in members of the community to taste the coffee and sample. And it sounds like they may have their own blend, I believe, at North Cedar. So it's just an exciting opportunity that we have local business people who are willing to put in their time and investment for our kids to do something like that. And what a great real-world application of those learning skills for our kids. So I was just thrilled to hear about it more from her, and just wanted to give a shout out to Jen for representing us so well at that conference.
We are the first and only, so far, school district that has had an elementary STEM BESC grant, and it is at North Cedar. And, you know, Jed Vanderzandt has been tremendous to work with, and a big advocate for public education in the Cedar Falls School District. And it's really exciting. And that's been one of the adaptations at North Cedar, because we knew, as we received this grant and looked at opportunities to really have some project approaches for kids, there had to be some changes within the cafeteria, there had to be some changes within kind of the heart of the building to accommodate this work that we're undertaking. So it's going to be very exciting, and I know that they were starting to even review and start to test some of those North Cedar potential blends. And it's going to only continue to grow as we look to the future. So it's exciting.
Maybe we can invite them here, so that we can sample some of the coffee.
That's right.
We can do a taste test.
Yes.
Yes.
Be good.
Thanks, Jen. All right.
This is one of the side things that I'm really so pleased, with caps and this, we're finding more and more ways to get our community into our schools.
Exciting.
I think that is great.
It's all about, we're a public entity and public schools, so we have to make sure that that is emphasized.
Community school district.
Community school district, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else to come before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.